Join us in the places, first with the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Tonight, we will lead off with the presentation of the business of the month, presented by Jedco Assistant Sherri McDonald, maybe along with their chairman of the board, Darrell Mintz.
Good evening, council. Sorry, that was loud. I'm here on behalf of Jedco to award Federal Heath the April Business of the Month Award. So I'd like to call Terri Derisse up. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Federal Heath. They are a sign manufacturing company, and they make like large commercial signs. So sometime in the fall a few years back, someone from their company called us and said, hey, are y'all doing anything for Manufacturing Day? And we didn't, and they had opened up their plant to offer tours for the public. And so the next year, we scheduled to take some high school students from the CTE department to tour their plant. And we had several visits that day with different manufacturing companies. But the good thing about Federal Heath was that's where it clicked with our students. What they're working on, the skills they're learning, what they're studying, they actually saw it being applied at Federal Heath. And they got the most excited when they toured Federal Heath. They learned about the welding and just the different parts of making the sign, manufacturing. And so it was very rewarding to know that those kids got excited about what they're working on once they visited your plant. So but another thing about Federal Heath is they're one of our large employers. They employ about 150 or so. And we just are very lucky to have a company the caliber of Federal Heath in Jacksonville. Terri Derisse is the plant manager, and he's been with them a year or not even, just a little over a year. So he's still new to Jacksonville. But I just wanted to thank you for everything you do for the community. I know that you're a great partner, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Three, two, one. Perfect. Tonight, we have two proclamations. The first, is there a national public safety telecommunicator in the audience? A certified, your license, come on. This, in case you don't know, this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So we have a proclamation, and it reads, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency does occur, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Jacksonville Emergency Communications Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators of the Jacksonville Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in this past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Jacksonville declares the week of April night through the 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Jacksonville. In honor of the men and women who diligently and professionally keep our city and our citizens safe, sign this the 11th day of April, 2023. By Randy Gormayor. I'll present it to you, since you're right here.
This is going to give you five minutes to get this. Oh, yeah. All right. Right here. Three, two, one. Perfect. Thank y'all.
Our dispatchers are the first responders before first responders ever go. They're the ones that answer the phone call. They answer the phone call 2,000 times a month, 911 calls, 48,000 times a year, just regular phone calls. The difference between what they do and what the rest of us in fire does is when we go to a call, we get resolution. When we leave the call, we know what happened. They don't. They oftentimes are left in the dark until we come back and tell them what happened. And it's, when you sit at that console, Steven's been sitting there for two months. When you sit there at that console pushing buttons and talking to people that you don't even see face to face for eight, or 10, or 12 hours a day, I can't do it. So I'm very appreciative of what they do, the career path that they've chosen to take, very proud of them. They don't get enough appreciation ever. So this week, we're going to make it a big deal for them, and thank y'all for what you do.
Our next proclamation is the Child Abuse Prevention Month. So if you'll come, that would be great. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2021, 3.9 million reports were made to child protective services. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions require input and action from everyone. Whereas our children are the most valuable resources and will shape the future of the state of Texas and our entire country. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of a partnership created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas the communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, our Randy Gormayor of the City of Jacksonville, Texas, do hereby proclaim April, 2023, as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Jacksonville, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. So I'll present that to you. Now that I've completed my reading assignment, we will start with our agenda. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to listen to our citizens. We cannot talk or discuss anything, but we want to hear if you have thoughts that you would like to present to us. And we have one that's signed up. Her name is Kathleen Stanfield. You'll come to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay, buckle up. I can do it in one. I'm Kathleen Stanfield. My address, I'm not giving you my address. Oh, you've got it right there. Okay. Okay, so this morning, I called James and left a voicemail, and I'm certain when James sees my caller ID, he's like, okay. You know, it was a good message. I had to go through the West Side this morning, and I had the opportunity to drive down College Avenue. And I was shocked. I couldn't believe it. And so I called James, and I complimented him, and I realized that I needed to do it. I want every one of you to reach around your neck and pat yourselves on the back. College Avenue looked fantastic this morning. We came back to Jacksonville in 1997.
Join us in the places, first is the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight, we will lead off with a presentation of the business of the month presented by JEDCO Assistant Sherri McDonald, maybe along with their Chairman of the Board Darrell Lament.
Good evening, Council. Sorry, that was loud. I'm here on behalf of JEDCO to award Federal Heath the April Business of the Month Award. So I'd like to call Terri DeRice up. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Federal Heath. They are a sign manufacturing company and they make like large commercial signs. So sometime in the fall a few years back, someone from their company called us and said, hey, are y'all doing anything for Manufacturing Day? And we didn't. And they had opened up their plant to offer tours for the public. And so the next year, we scheduled to take some high school students from the CTE department to tour their plant. And we had several visits that day with different manufacturing companies. But the good thing about Federal Heath was that's where it clicked with our students. What they're working on, the skills they're learning, what they're studying, they actually saw it being applied at Federal Heath. And they got the most excited when they toured Federal Heath. They learned about the welding and just the different parts of making the sign, manufacturing. And so it was very rewarding to know that those kids got excited about what they're working on once they visited your plant. So but another thing about Federal Heath is they're one of our large employers. They employ about 150 or so. And we just are very lucky to have a company the caliber of Federal Heath in Jacksonville. Terri DeRice is the plant manager and he's been with them a year or not even, just a little over a year. So he's still new to Jacksonville. But I just wanted to thank you for everything you do for the community. I know that you're a great partner and we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Tonight, we have two proclamations. The first, is there a national public safety telecommunicator in the audience?
Certified, your license, come on.
This, in case you don't know, this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So we have a proclamation and it reads, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police fire or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency does occur, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Jacksonville Emergency Communications Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Jacksonville Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in this past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Jacksonville declares the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Jacksonville. And in honor of the men and women who diligently and professionally keep our city and our citizens safe, safe, sign this the 11th day of April, 2023, by Randy Gormley. I'll present it to you since you're right here.
This is gonna give him five minutes to get this.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Right here. Three, two, one. Perfect. Thank y'all.
Our dispatchers are the first responders before first responders ever go. They're the ones that answer the phone call. They answer the phone call 2,000 times a month, 911 calls, 48,000 times a year, just regular phone calls. The difference between what they do and what the rest of us in FIRE does is when we go to a call, we get resolution. When we leave the call, we know what happened. They don't. They oftentimes are left in the dark until we come back and tell them what happened. And it's, when you sit at that console, Steven's been sitting there for two months. When you sit there at that console pushing buttons and talking to people that you don't even see face to face for eight or 10 or 12 hours a day, I can't do it. So I'm very appreciative of what they do, the career path that they've chosen to take, very proud of them. They don't get enough appreciation ever. So this week, we're gonna make it a big deal for them and thank y'all for what you do.
Our next proclamation is the Child Abuse Prevention Month. So if you'll tell that would be great. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2021, 3.9 million reports were made to Child Protective Services. And whereas child abuse neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions require input and action from everyone. Whereas our children are the most valuable resources and will shape the future of the state of Texas and our entire country. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of a partnership created between child welfare professional, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas the communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, our Randy Gorm, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Jacksonville and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. So I'll present that to you. Now that I've completed my reading assignment, we will start with our agenda. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to listen to our citizens. We cannot talk or discuss anything, but we want to hear if you have thoughts that you would like to present to us. And we have one that signed up. Her name is Kathleen Stanfield. You'll come to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay, buckle up. I can do it in one. I'm Kathleen Stanfield. My address, I'm not giving you my address. Oh, you've got it right there. Okay. Okay, so this morning, I called James and left a voicemail and I'm certain when James sees my caller IDs, like, okay, you know. It was a good message. I had to go through the West Side this morning and I had the opportunity to drive down College Avenue. And I was shocked. I couldn't believe it. And so I called James and I complimented him and I realized that I needed to do it. I want every one of you to reach around your neck and pat yourselves on the back. College Avenue looked fantastic this morning. We came back to Jacksonville in 1994. I've never seen that street look as good as it did today. No bags of trash up and down the street, no dogs, no cans, blue things all the way down, everything neat and nice. And I thought, this is fantastic. This is what we've waited for. Y'all, it's been 30 years. I mean, I'm not exaggerating. We've looked at trash on the West Side for 30 years. Well, I wasn't gonna talk to y'all until this afternoon. I went down Bonner Street. Same thing. It was like, oh my God. So I had to come tell y'all, I know that you've probably had some pushback on some of this, but y'all have made a huge difference. It's amazing. I'm so proud of it and I'm so happy. And I thank the leaders that brought it to the attention and got it done and we're really lucky. And I really love the way town looks. Thank you.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you, Kathleen. Item number, second reading of a resolution in support of economic development incentives and then discussion and consideration of possible action on that resolution of support.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council, is on? I think it's on. All right. Mayor and City Council, I'm gonna take this over for Shane tonight. He's unable to be here. The first reading of this resolution took place at your workshop Thursday, April 6th. It's the second reading of Resolution Number 04202301, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Jacksonville, Texas approving projects of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation that may include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure, and improvements found by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors to promote newer expanded business development within the City of Jacksonville, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. What this is, Council, is approval of three different expenditures that are all recommended unanimously by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. It, they're listed in the resolution as an amount not to exceed $150,000 to Bodark International Incorporated for the creation and retention of a minimum of 29 primary jobs at a manufacturing facility located at 101 Anvil Street in Jacksonville, and amount not to exceed $175,000 for the purchase of real property located at 218 East Commerce Street in Jacksonville for the purposes of providing additional public parking. That parking lot lies at the northwest corner of Ragsdale and Commerce Street. And an amount not to exceed $49,000 to Conventions Sports and Leisure International LLC, CSNL, for a feasibility study for a multipurpose event center in Jacksonville. I'll do my best to answer any questions.
So you've heard that reading. I will entertain a motion and then we can discuss if need be.
I'll make the motion that we approve a resolution in support of economic development incentives.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robb Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion we may need? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight on your agenda is our consent agenda. Items under the consent require little or no deliberation by us. You see, it's just a housekeeping, approval of the minutes, street closure for the taco cook-off, et cetera, et cetera. If there's any that you'd like pulled out and voted separately, we can do that. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Number nine is any action out of the executive session if necessary. I think we may have two.
We do, Mayor. The first one is to authorize the city manager to execute the closing documents on the vacant lots between 308 and 314 South Main.
Are you making that as a motion?
I'm making a motion to authorize, yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion on that first one? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And we may have another.
We do have a second one.
Wonderful.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a license agreement with the Rodeo Association for the rodeo grounds.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any questions? Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those two motions out of the executive session carry. Item number 10 is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding a contract for the filter upgrade at the water treatment plant.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, I'm gonna do my best not to butcher this and we have Randall on deck if we need him. But we did bid out this project as for the replacement of filter media at the wastewater treatment, I'm sorry, excuse me, at the water treatment plant on Kickapoo Street. It was, again, competitively bid out. We received a bid of $311,500. It was budgeted at $261,000, so we came in just over $50,000 over budget. However, Randall's worked to defer two different projects in his utility fund budget, accounting for that shortfall in the initial budget. This media's been in place since about 1982, I believe, and it has certainly served its life well and is time to be replaced to help with water quality.
Okay. You've heard that description, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we awarded contract for the filter upgrade at the water treatment plant.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robb Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion we may need? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the construction manager at risk for the Civic Center remodel.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you're aware, we did purchase the former clubhouse at the golf course a little over a year ago. We're now underway with starting to plan the redevelopment and the renovation of that facility. As part of that process, we did work with the architect that hadn't been selected to lead it to help us in selecting a CMAR or a construction manager at risk to lead up the construction and design effort and help us control costs. We received four submittals ranging from a fee of 17.5% up to 28.5%. Thankfully, the architect has experience with SCI Construction, formerly Garrett. They actually were responsible for building City Hall and with staff recommends award to SCI Construction for the CMAR contract.
Okay. You've heard that discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we award SCI Construction, the construction manager at risk for the Civic Center remodel.
We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding a demolition contract for condemned structures.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, at the February 7th meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, 21 structures received demolition orders. One of those was removed by the owner, so the city ended up bidding out the removal of 20 structures. You can see here on the map, they're scattered around town. The bids came in at just around $102,000 and we do anticipate some potential asbestos abatement needed at one or two of the structures, bringing that total up to about $120,000 for the city. We budgeted 50 for this, knowing that we would probably push some of the demolition into the next fiscal year. Just due to the paperwork and everything, it made sense to streamline as many properties as we undertook at that one time. However, I want to commend JEDCO that came alongside the city and have committed $50,000 toward this effort as well. And we feel comfortable that with their support, we'll be able to absorb the additional incremental cost of removing all 20 structures.
Okay. That's great. Okay, you've heard that and I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we award the demolition contract for the condemned structures as.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Lady Mindy Gellit.
Second.
Second, right. Mayor Pro Tim Robb Goen. Any discussion we may need?
I mean, is this gonna bring us to 40, 30? In the last two years, it'll be 30, yeah.
And this is spread out over like three different contractors?
It's two different contractors. There was four tranches or kind of bid packages and two contractors, each one two sets.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider with possible action selling three of the city's fleet vehicles.
13.
I'm sorry, 13? Oh, yeah. Discuss and consider with possible action awarding a contract of the rehabilitation work on well number three ground storage tank.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, at the December 13th, '22 meeting, we approved, or you approved, a professional services agreement with KSA for the design of this project in an amount of $102,800. At the April 4th of this year, there was a bid opening at which the city received 10 responses to secure this work. Those responses ranged from our low bidder of $365,950 all the way up to over a million dollars or right at a million dollars. We had $425 budgeted for this project, so including the professional service fees, we're still slightly over budget. However, staff does recommend moving forward with this project just to complete the rehabilitation of all five wells. And with the construction market the way it is, it's just gonna behoove us to get it done and dip into fund reserves to cover the overage.
So I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make the motion that we award the contract for the rehabilitation work on well three ground storage tank to NG Painting LP of Kerrville, Texas.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robb Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Our next item is to discuss and consider with possible action selling three of the city's fleet vehicles and I think with Councilman.
With your permission, I'd like to recuse myself from this conversation since I am an interested party.
Okay.
And I'll step back here and come to me if you want to.
All right, we'll do that.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, the city competitively bid out our fleet purchase. Included in that agreement was also the obligation to sell the fleet back to Bill McCray Ford located here in Jacksonville, Texas. They were the winner of the competitive process. We've reached a point in kind of the year where we feel comfortable dissolving ourselves of three trucks. These trucks were each purchased in an amount or for an amount of $34,083. Based on the concessions the city was able to secure from Ford Motor Company at the time of purchase, we're now able to sell them used with a range of 15,000 to 27,000 miles on them for a gain to the city of roughly $7,900, $8,900, and $9,900 per truck. And those amounts are based on condition and mileage, so it's a net benefit to the city of $26,751.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to sell those vehicles.
I'll make the motion that we approve the selling of three of our city vehicles.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Robb Goen, second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion?
We gonna be able to do this next year?
Question for Tim, but we're waiting on the concessions to come back.
Right. Because they took all these kind of vehicles, they quit manufacturing these type vehicles. For municipalities, under the deals that we've done.
Yes.
It's been a good project.
We've had them a little over a year.
We have, just right out of here. Yes, sir.
Okay, did we get, did we get a motion this same?
I made the motion.
Second, okay.
Hubert did second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. We'll get Tim back in here. Yeah, I wish that would, we could do that again.
Yeah.
Maybe we can someday.
I know.
Item number 15 is policy updates, nepotism, and part-time employee holiday pay and PTO.
Yes, this policy has increased the benefits for part-time employees by supporting the holiday pay and PTO as well as a minor update to our current nepotism policy. The policy is set to improve turnover rate as well as increase improvement in the competitive market for our part-time employees. And the adjustment to the nepotism policy does maintain alignment with any applicable laws.
Okay. Very good. I'll entertain a motion to update those two policies.
I make a motion, we update the two policies about nepotism and part-time employee holiday pay and PTO.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion? Questions? She explained those very well last Thursday at our workshop.
Yes, she did.
Appreciate that. If no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 16 is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution for submission of a 2023-2024 Texas Community Development Block Grant application for community development block grant funds. The grant funds, if awarded, will be used to fund a Sycamore Street sewer improvement and a Nichols Green Park sewer main replacement.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, the grant administrator, the city's grant administrator on this project trailer and associates reached out to us after last Thursday's workshop and asked that we put this item on the agenda. We did end up swapping a project out for what's now being called the Nichols Green Sewer Line Replacement. It serves a little bit different area. We had to do some demographic and socioeconomic surveying, both in person and via the telephone. And this project fit the grant more appropriately, and so we are seeking approval of this resolution in support of the application.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application resolution as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That completes our agenda items. Open forum for Mayor and Council. Anybody have anything you want to talk about? Mayor Pro Tim?
No, not really. The, what, last weekend, the barbecue fest for the.
Oh, great. Do we have a tally on how much that raised?
$14,000.
Wow.
And I got to spend the night outside in the middle of Commerce Street with some of our fun policemen.
Wonderful. That's great. Anybody else?
I think Randy is leadership Jacksonville here tonight?
They are.
Oh, are they? Okay, I didn't know that. If you're with Leadership Jacksonville Wave or Stand or something, just, great thing. Yeah, that's a great program the City Chamber puts out.
My apologies.
Yeah, that's great. Super. All right. City Manager report?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, just a couple items I want to call your attention to. I want to publicly thank Bella's Heart Animal Rescue. They donated 30 brand-new dog beds to the animal shelter. We're gonna use those beds. We can't use them in the facility based on sanitation practices. However, we'll be gifting those to people who adopt pets over the next couple of months or however long it takes to work through them. But we appreciate that kind donation. Recap of the March 25th Cleanup Day was kind of our second annual branding of the Great Jacksonville Cleanup. The community came out in droves. They were able to fill up 14 30-yard roll-offs mounting to over 52,000 pounds of junk. Very apparent that a lot of this had probably been sitting out in backyards and side yards, you know, water damage and things along those lines. Also had more than 40 volunteers come out to clean up litter centrally or kind of focused on our major highways throughout town. So I ended up having to go back to the Metroplex on Sunday and they were way down 175. And thanks also to Republic Services, they were able to not only do the roll-offs for us but also clean up all the litter bags that our volunteers tied shut on the side of the road. And thanks to our staff for seeking grant funding for that. That entire event was really underwritten by a grant from the East Texas Council of Governments, so we were thankful for that as well. Rescue Camp was a huge hit last summer and it is being planned again this summer, June 12th through 14th. It's a day camp, so if you're interested and have kids of the appropriate age, stay tuned. But make sure you sign up probably on the day it opens, which is May 1st. It'll fill up extremely fast. So go to Facebook to find out more or jacksonbillytx.org or forward slash rescue camp. And lastly, we're gonna have a really special council meeting, May 9th. We are going to see the outgoing, kind of officially, Councilman Member Hubert Robinson. Served as mayor at a time, served this community over 20 years in that position. And he will actually be swearing in Councilwoman-Elect Latidia Horus to District 1. So we look forward to that next Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, May 9th. And that is all I have.
That's it?
Yes.
Well, it is 6:30. We'll stand adjourned and thank you for coming.